Make a motion to approve?
Second.
How many did we lose?
So this council is woke.
Thank you.
I made the motion and Mr. Ron seconded it.
And what was the motion?
To approve.
Can we have a speaker? Miriam Cruz? Yes, you are.
Miriam Cruz, I wanted to point out two things. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, they actually voted down to not approve. Then they opened up the item again, and then there was no action. So I just wanted to make that clear. I'm sure Mr. I mean, Mr. Medina just told you the final version, but I just wanted to talk about that because we were there probably an hour or two, or maybe an hour on this one agenda item. So it is something that the commissioners talked about a lot, and a lot in detail. And the only one thing I do want to point out, which is in the backup, and that is included as the recommendation, is that they allow access to that house that you see is in the little triangle right here. They've said that they're going to allow access, but I just asked that you can make that part of your motion to make sure that that house has access in and out, and they're not locked in there. That's it, thank you.
Can I have a speaker?
Well, before I make my motion, I mean, before I give my vote, my two cents, I got to say it. As it is, that house right there always uses the canal, always. They know that they're landlocked, as it is how they stand today, okay? So there's nothing we can do about it because they've been there for years using the canal as their driveway, okay? I...
Cesar Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
And I understand what you're saying, but let's try to see if we can work it, you know, work something out if possible. I don't think we lose anything trying to, you know, do a collaborative assist for those people. I know that they're landlocked, but, you know, we can change it for the future, if possible, yes.
Going back to item number 19, discussion on action to adopt resolution 572 in support of the 2020 census and establishing a complete count committee to be made up of community members and leaders for the purpose of increasing participation in the decennial census. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Resolution.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Aladez, Grants Coordinator. This is a resolution to support the 2020 census complete count committee. As you know, the 2020 census is a very important topic that is coming up. The 2020 census is mandated by the Constitution every 10 years. Currently, there is a negative perception of the census because of the national discussions around immigration and the citizenship question. Many cities have estimated that minority populations are less likely to report for the 2020 census, and this could potentially result in an undercount. An undercount would mean that federal agencies would not appropriate funds in a manner that represents the true number of residents that we have in Socorro. And so it's important that we communicate the importance of the census to our community and to our residents, that we communicate that census information cannot be used in any other way other than what is designated for the census data. And it's important that we encourage the residents to participate in the 2020 census. The complete count committees that have been formed all throughout the nation are designed to be made up of community leaders and trusted members of the community that are then going to go out into the community and talk to their neighbors, talk to their neighborhood associations, to the churches, and carry that message that we need to participate in the census. The financial impact is $1,500, and this is for promotional materials and educational materials related to the Census 2020 campaign. We have currently already provided in-kind support for this initiative through our recreation centers budget. They've been able to print out flyers and pamphlets for us, and our IT department has helped us to put together a Census 2020 webpage in the city's website, but we do need additional support. If you all have any questions?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay. I am in agreement. I just want to just clarify some stuff. The 2020 census is very important, yes it is, to all communities, not just to us, to all communities, okay? Because of a question, a question of status of residency. One of the things is, when they say, and people are politically want to be correct all the time, but nobody really wants to say it, is that there is a lot of people that don't have a residency, that they're not citizens. And regardless of their status, immigration status, it's going to hurt our cities because if the illegal immigrants do not get counted, okay, it's going to hurt our census, not just ours, but San Marcos, Queens, Bayonne, of Pasco County in general. And what that does is it's going to affect funding that we receive, that we'll be able to. In that notion, I would like to make my motion to adopt resolution 572 in support of the 2020 census. Because every, every person...
Is that your motion, Ralph?
Oh, is that your motion, Ralph? Good. Because everybody has to be counted regardless, regardless of their immigration status.
I agree.
Sorry, so the motion is there, but everybody should...
Mr. Perez? I just, I just think 1,500 is very little. What is a 1,500 for? Because I'm a realtor, 1,500 does not get me a lot of advertisement.
Correct. So right now, we do have some T-shirts that are going to be made to kick off the campaign. We're barely in the starting phases of the formation of the committee, so we haven't clearly defined what our main campaign events are going to be, or what that budget is going to require. So more than likely, you'll see me again in a couple of months to come and request for funding with an actual budget and a list of actions that we're going to take as a committee.
Can I add to that, please? And the other, well, now that you've said that, maybe you might want to, because I am with him, I say that all the time, and I've been talking to people and telling them we need to count everybody. It's important for our city. You want that light? When they come to me, you want that light? And let's make sure we count every single person because we need, we need the funds. But could you make that part of your campaign?
Yes, absolutely. The slogan right now that we have on our city website is "In Socorro, Everyone Counts", and so we want to stress that. That webpage is live already, and you'll see that it provides some information. There's also a map of how we were, Socorro was counted in the 2010 census, so you can see which neighborhoods were undercounted. And it's great to go and see and see that, you know, my neighborhood wasn't counted, so I really want to make sure that me, my family, and my neighbors are counted, and more importantly, understand that the services that the city provides are going to be provided to everyone regardless of immigration status. So if you call our police department, somebody's going to show up. They're not going to care if you're a citizen, not a citizen. If we have a park, our park is for everybody. So the federal government does use census data to allocate funding. Our state government uses census data to allocate funding. Us on the local level, we use census data to justify the need for grant funding that we're requesting from the state and the federal government. So it's very important that we have an accurate count.
Our shirts are like for your future, and we also have like a push-up, we've got like push-ups for people to target every market. And, I'm sorry, and one more thing. If you, I mean, I know you have, everybody counts, but tell them why everybody counts.
Right, yes, absolutely.
If we could do that, I think that's 50% of, you know, the job that we have in front of us to talk to.
Yes, and it's a tough job because there are different target audiences. You're not going to try to reach the same, you're not going to reach an 18-year-old the same way that you would reach a senior citizen. So those different approaches in how we market this campaign are going to be key.
Okay. Mr. Perez?
I think that, just a little bit of perspective, I know that when it comes to the national discussion, I can understand why individuals don't want to answer because given the environment that we live in now, you know, you don't, there's that trust, there's not, there is that mistrust, I should say. And so that's perfectly understandable. On the flip side, I think that if we, the city, in cooperation with the school district, because the school district is also impacted with federal funds and stuff like that, that if we had information nights at the different, at different schools in the neighborhoods, I think that you're, you would get, instead of asking, going for a big turnout, I think that that, those kinds of conversations are more effective when you do them in small groups because then the word starts to spread among the neighbors.
Right.
And so I think that if we can look at that as a potential of spreading the information, that may be effective. In terms of the amount of money we're looking at, what would you say?
Just $1,500 for right now.
So at that point, what would that buy, I guess?
So this is only for T-shirts to start the campaign. So on our website, we list the different ways that you can involve, get involved in the Census 2020 campaign. The first one is to participate in the complete count committee. If you want to start planning, maybe you want to coordinate a community meeting and talk about the census in your house and invite your neighbors, that kind of approach. The second thing is to become a census ambassador. So in our city events, we're going to have a little census table and invite people to play games or to learn about the census and to sign a, a kind of like a commitment to encourage people to participate in the census, and they would get a T-shirt. And that T-shirt would have our slogan, our hashtag, and our city webpage where they can get more information. And so right now, we're asking for the $1,500 to offset the cost of the T-shirts because that's not part of our recreation center budget. We don't want to keep eating away at their budget.
And just to clarify, that 1,500 dollars is not a part of the recreation campaign? Does that mean that you're having to, like, I don't know, for marketing? And then what we're going to do, Mr. Perez, and our responsible, and I think not to share that, regarding that, but it's easier for us to have a meeting as opposed to do it all together, just so we can monitor better what we're saying?
Okay.
Sometimes you get the effect of the other.
Yeah, because that's, that's what, that's what we were...
Because I see that always, you know, a function like that, when you have an information night, it's always great if, for example, you work with a school, they put on a little talent show, everybody wants to come and see their kids perform.
Absolutely.
So then, so then you have them, you have them do that, and then you have a merienda of some sort, pan dulce, whatever you want to serve, but, you know, it could be, you can have it catered, you can have somebody, you know, sponsor it, whatever the case may be. But you attract the individuals that way, and then, and then you have a, literally you have a captive audience because you put on the meeting, then you have the entertainment.
Right.
Okay? And then, and then I think you'll have more of an effective turnout that way.
So, yep.
Great.
I have one more question.
Ms. Ellos?
How do you approach them? How will we be approaching them, or how should we approach them, when it's, when they say that this census is given to the government? I guess the government, you know, they don't understand that a lot of, it's private information. Just because this is Border Patrol does not mean that you get to share everything. I mean, they're different entities, people don't understand that. So how do you, I mean, we can approach them and say this is not, this list does not go anywhere but the census, correct?
Right, and the information that is gathered by the census, the Census Bureau cannot provide information on any individual family. What they do is they compile the data, and they provide reports that are stripped of individual names, stripped of the specific household. And this data is available to everybody, it's used widely. So the information is available to everybody, but not any information on any specific family or specific household, so nobody can go online and look at what your household's income is, or how many people live in your house. That's actually illegal. The second thing I would say is that this is, I would talk about this as a way of empowerment because not only does it determine the funding, but it also determines how many representatives we get as a, and it also determines our districts. So if we don't have an accurate count, that essentially eliminates the power that our community has and our, the representation that we have in our state government and in our federal government.
Thank you.
Aye.
Cesar Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Turan? Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes. Resolution 572, Census 2020, where as the US Census Bureau is required by Article 1, Section 2 of the US Constitution to conduct a count of the population and provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Item number 20, discussion on action to approve the Socorro Police Department's policy on computer and electronic equipment usage and data security.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So as you all remember, last year, we did receive a body worn camera grant. The body worn camera grant was received by the police department. Right now, we're in the process of doing the final purchase of the body worn cameras. And one of the stipulations of the grant, a requirement, was that we have a policy for the use of the body worn cameras, when they can be used, when they're supposed to be turned on, are officers allowed to access that data or not? So for that, we, our Socorro Police Department proposed a policy on computer and electronic equipment usage and data security. So it establishes the authority, the authorized users and uses, states protocols for storage, security, and retention. It establishes what uses of equipment is prohibited and what's inappropriate. It also talks about specific equipment such as computers, mobile video recording systems, mobile telephone, cell phone cameras, digital cameras, whether they're personal or city issued, digital media recorders, license plate readers, and it also establishes the officer responsibilities as well as the supervisor responsibilities.
Mr. Perez?
And this is a good idea, and obviously, we need to have it for funding purposes or whatever, but will the officers have to sign, well, I would suggest, I don't know if it's in the works, that each person, because I know that we have to do it, is sign off that we received a copy of it?
Yes, so as a part of this, also the requirements, all officers have to receive training on the policy and the use of the body worn cameras as well. So right now, we are almost completed with all of our training. I think there's one or two officers that haven't taken the training, but will do so this week or next week, and everybody should be trained at that point.
Like, you know, you would have the packet, the last page would be, I received the training, the date, the individual's signature and printed name. They take this off, and they give it back to whomever, and that way, it helps with your accountability to make sure that everyone has been trained.
Right, and we can talk about integrating into part of our onboarding if that's...
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ellos?
And I want to add, and I expressed this to Mrs. Rolarte this week, I've been getting a lot, a lot of complaints about our police officers not being friendly, blah, blah, blah. And this will help actually clarify that. What was said, this body cam is, or is it just recording, video, audio, both?
So there's certain specifics on when we turn it on. Obviously, if they're on a case, any criminal investigation, it's going to be on, but we don't, because of the data that's, we're going to have to store, it's costly, so it's not going to be on 24/7, it'll be on just for specific investigations. Now, if an officer gets involved where you have an irate citizen, they may turn it on because it's going to help protect them from, on, or false accusations and things like that of nature, but it's really meant for any criminal investigations. Anything outside of that, it's going to be costly, it's going to be a tax, I mean, it's going to be very burdensome to the department to try to keep any, every type of encounter. So it's mainly for criminal investigations and things where we might need to record in case it comes back to, to create any issue.
Okay, thank you.
Canel Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Thank you, yes.
Item number 21, discussion on action to award a service contract with Big Dog Pyro for Independence Day Extravaganza in the amount of $18,000.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mr. Reta is out on vacation, so you don't have the pleasure of seeing him. But the city of Socorro is preparing for our 2019 Independence Day Extravaganza, which is our Fourth of July event. This year, we will be having it on Thursday, the Fourth of July day, and normally, every year, we come back and ask you to allow us the opportunity to agreement. This is the same company that we used last year, so it's just more of a formality. The price did go up a few, I think last year, we paid close to $16,000, this year's $18,000 for 20 minutes.
Mr. Perez?
When they pop the fireworks, that they make sure that they go up instead of out?
Yes, and that actually was the wind. Yes, it, it hit Mr. Charlie, Mr. Charlie experienced that this, this past year.
I burned.
Is that what happened to you?
Yes, everybody was trying to hide from me because they thought I was going to shut down the event.
No, it just said, it came like bullets, literally, like...
It did.
And, I'm sorry, Ms. Ellos? So the total price is 18, or we have sponsors?
We're trying to go out and get sponsors, but for now, it's $18,000, and we're budgeted for it.
Okay.
But we are in the, we're right now actively looking for sponsorships for this event.
So if we get sponsorship, then the 18 will be reduced?
Correct.
That would be the ideal thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And when we say sponsorship, is there sponsorship for different levels?
Yes, ma'am, there's different packages that Mr. Reta sends out an email to everyone he can think of, and then provides different packages. And we also go knocking on, on our businesses here locally.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we're still negotiating terms of the contract, so I would suggest that the motion includes authority for the administration to file a complaint.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, we are? I thought it was, okay. So, but it's not going up?
Correct.
Second.
Canel Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Item number 22, discussion on action to approve restructuring proposal for the Socorro Police Department. It is within our present staffing levels for 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, our chief burden is also out. He had to fly back home just to get some paperwork signed for his move, for to move his family all the way over here, okay? And that is the reason why I'm presenting. So our Socorro Police Department received a new chief on February 25th. This department lacks accountability due to the shortage of supervision. I know that we've been here, Ms. Colombia Lobo, and she's asking us to come up with a plan, and I know that some officers have said that we're always very, we have good officers, but we don't have enough supervision. So therefore, we are requesting, so we're not requesting for more officers, we're just requesting to create positions for supervisory positions, which is a co-proposition. So you would have your chief of police, you would have your administrative assistant, right, assisting the chief of police, you have the operations lieutenant that will oversee the 26 personnel officers, and then you'll have your administrative lieutenant. That lieutenant will have 16 personnel, and if you could see the org chart that is on the backup, you will have a supervisor on every shift, including when people go on vacation, holidays. That'll mean that somebody is responsible for that shift, something that we are lacking at this time. We only have three sergeants, one lieutenant, and the chief, and you're running a 24/7 operation. We believe that if we put the supervision, we can now hold people accountable for everything that is happening. Plus, we're not asking to add more personnel, so at most, this fiscal year, right, because our fiscal year's not over, it would affect us $51,000, but there's some, $51,000 at most for this year. However, there is enough salary savings that we can make these changes effective immediately, and that's for the lieutenant and for our sergeants. For our co-proposition, you will see a job description coming up on our next meeting. Plus, there will be an assessment that has to be created in order for the hiring process to take place.
So does that mean that individuals will be promoted?
Correct.
Potentially, or people will be doing double, pulling double duty, like going out and patrolling and then acting as...
So your sergeant, your sergeants and your co-propositions, they're pretty much paid as a non-exempt employee, so they're always out there patrolling, right? But there's so many, there's just three of them right now. So by expanding this, this would put a supervisor on every shift, and they would be out there at the scene or assisting our officers in making the day-to-day operation.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I think this is great, since I've been here and as long as I can remember, that has been an issue about at midnight or at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, there's no supervision for our officers. But not just that, but there's nobody in charge if something really happens with our officers. So I'm not saying that it's just to oversight on our officers, it's to make sure that everything's okay. And I think this is great. I think this is something that's about time. I also know that we're deficient in our, in our patrol officers. We should be like at 34, 35, you know, we're running low. We have to consider, you know, trying to be more pro-lead active. I know that it, since we're doing this, is there any way that, I know we went out for some, some funding, some federal funding to add some more officers?
Correct, so I'm not finished with my presentation, I was going to address that.
Oh, okay, okay, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't want to miss a step on no toes, I'm just saying, this is great, very great, good start, and it's about time.
Okay, so do you all have any questions on the organizational chart? Because we do have some pending grants, which is your community resource officers, your crimes victim advocate, and the US Marshal Office is paying for one. and the U.S. Marshal Office is paying for one. So, that would add three new officers to the, to the pool. Right now, we do have a vacancy of one officer that we're currently wanting to hire. But this, this would give us either a year to two years. We are going to experience a lot of growth in the coming year. We have three subdivisions that are coming up, and we don't have the manpower to do it. But by adding these corporal positions, we're able to kind of supervise every shift that is out there and hold people accountable for complaints that we're receiving, information that's going out there. I have a name to who's out there that I can call at night if it's two or three in the morning and, you know, ask, ask questions.
Ms. Elavos? So, let me ask you. And this is just because I heard this recently and I'm just repeating it, and I think it's a wonderful idea. But is there any way that these, some of these positions can be filled by a regular citizen who is not of age yet, but is going into the police academy one day?
No, ma'am. No, we can't have...
To be in the office doing office operational?
Well, we do have the explorers program that they currently work. They are also working on a citizens academy that will assist on the lower end of patrolling or reporting. But to actually have them out there...
No, no, not out. I'm talking about...
As peace officers?
In office.
In office. And, and I know that you have that, that program, but I don't think they're there at midnight or at, you know, two in the morning or anything like that.
And that's because we lack the supervision. Right? If there's not a supervisor, I mean, we can open up an internship program, and that's something that we can look at. But right now, that's not something that we were even looking at, just because we can't have an internship or someone unsupervised working with documentation that's all sensitive.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, we are asking, so the city's working rapidly. We're asking to, to the salary savings this year. We ask that the change for the LT and the sergeant positions are made effective immediately. There is enough funding in our budget at this time to make these changes. And again, the new corporal positions won't take effect until the new fiscal year because the job description is coming your way, and we have to create an assessment for that hiring process. The, the assessment for sergeants has been concluded, and that ends June. So, we already have an assessment that has been conducted and identified who the next sergeants are in line
Excellent.
to become sergeants. Is there any questions, concerns? Thank you.
San Antonio Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Raftora? Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Item number 23, discussion and action to rescind bid nineteen dash oh one contract award for building inspection services to Michelle's Ventures Incorporated, doing business as Vision Consultants Incorporated, and re-initiate the procurement process for residential and commercial plan checking and inspections.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Members, several weeks ago, I came before you to report that we were under capacity in terms of plan checking and building inspection services. So, the direction here was to award a contract and negotiate a fee. I am unfortunately here to let you know that the city was unsuccessful in having a flexible negotiable fee for the services that the city was asking for. And in the best interest of the city, understanding that there's a lot of development coming in, the request here is to rescind the action before and redirect us to do another RFQ for such services.
Mr. Perez?
Mr. Ben, what was the result from the first go-around? I'm just curious.
The, the result as a function of...
When you went out to RFQs, RFQs, excuse me?
In terms of the responses?
Right.
So, the, the one that, that we had, came forward was Michelle Ventures. And then there was an out-of-town agency, and then there was another local firm.
So, there was a total of three then?
There was only three responses, yes, sir.
All right, I was just curious about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
San Antonio Rodriguez?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 25, update on activities as directed by City Council for Ormsby Court.
Mike Million, City Planner. This is an update, again, some time back, there was direction from the council to go about and assess a survey for the Ormsby location. One of the things that we've been doing, part of the due diligence to ensure that before we use any municipal funds, is to ensure that there were no lawsuits or fees or taxes that are still old. And so, as part of this report, the department has reported to me that there are outstanding property owners that either have taxes that are not paid or there is a lawsuit. So, here is, is an update, but nonetheless, is that what we are doing in its relationship to the direction. We are still looking for a surveyor to do the work.
Thank you.
Item number 26, discussion and action regarding policies and procedures for use of Wells Fargo purchasing card and to ensure security and legitimacy of transactions for official city business.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. My name is Julie Franco. I'm the city auditor. And the reason I'm here is because in Ju, in January 25th, there was a memo sent via email to all the P-card holders, which includes our mayor, Mr. Duran, and Mr. Nevares. The members served as a friendly reminder to log into the Wells Fargo portal on a weekly basis to monitor charges and verify if the transactions are legitimate. I'm here to follow up on the memo, since there hasn't been no login activity by the mayor, Mr. Duran, and Mr. Nevares. Also, I want to emphasize on the importance of logging in into the Wells Fargo portal, since we have sixty days to dispute any fraudulent charge with Wells Fargo.
Mayor, I just want to add that this, this came by because of the fraudulent charges that we were being hit with. So, what we notice is that most of us that have purchasing cards won't go in and log in, so we won't know if we are receiving fraudulent charges. And by the time we find out, it'll be after the sixty days, meaning that the bank will not refund you until you have to dispute it with, with the actual vendor. So, it creates a challenge in order for us to receive our funds back. So, it's important that if you have your card, even if you don't use it, that we log in at, on a weekly basis and just check the activity, because if somebody's using it, you wouldn't know. That happened to me. I would never log in because I don't use my card. But the thing is, is if somebody's using it fraudulently, I wouldn't know because I'm assuming that I'm not using the card. We have also implemented that now you'll receive a text when your card is used. So, you'll receive like a notification, your card was used at this time, and this is the amount that it's used. So, we, we have done that. However, because you are cardholders, it's important for us to just make sure that we follow the policies that we actually have with our staff, with you all, that you at least try to log in once a week to verify that no fraudulent charges have been hit. Your account.
Ms. Elavos? First of all, the cards are to be used only for our trips or whatever it is for the city, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That make, because it says, you know, when you use your card. I'm just like, you know...
Correct, ma'am. But if you're receiving, if somebody's using your card fraudulently, you wouldn't know.
Right. And it's, and the message is going to our city phone, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And, okay, and we...
Email or city cell?
City cell, city cell and email as well, both of them.
Both of, okay. And we have access to the card to get in there and look at the, we have individual access?
Correct.
Correct.
I don't. Oh.
Yours and Mr. Rodriguez are different cards.
Okay. In other words, you're talking about me personally. I don't.
You don't.
Not the count, not the counts.
No, no, that, that...
Your card, your card is separate, as is Mr. Rodriguez. That's why she mentioned the mayor, Mr. Duran, and Mr. Nevares.
Okay.
Not to oust them, okay?
No, no, no.
I just want to clarify, guys.
No, no.
Don't feel that you're being ousted, okay? That's not what she meant, all right?
No, no.
It's not an outing. It's just that you guys are in a different...
This is just for educational purposes, these questions and answers.
And the reason that they're different is just because they were on the old system, and we went into a new system, and all three of you hit the new system. And Mr. Perez, you don't have a card, so...
I refused.
He refused the card, so that would exclude you from logging in. But because you do have a card and we've been experiencing these fraudulent charges, it's important that we log in.
But nobody being ousted, okay?
Ousted. All right.
San Antonio Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Raftora? Yes.
I'm going back to elementary school.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 27, discussion and action to approve an amended policy thirty-five for public civic and nonprofit organization use of Socorro City property and limited services.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mayor and Council, this policy is actually, we had brought it up in March regarding the Veterans, Socorro Veterans Memorial wanted to use our chambers more than the four times that it was allotted per year. And the direction was to go ahead and create a policy allowing that. And Mr. Martinez was going to address some of the concerns regarding Title VII discrimination.
New and approved.
Good.
San Antonio Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Raftora? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 28, discussion and action to approve Cintas uniforms for the Parks and Public Works Department and to authorize city manager or her designated to execute agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we were having some issues with our uniforms that are provided to the Parks and Public Works. So, we decided to go out and, and look for pricing. And the reason that this agreement is coming to you or before you is that there was an agreement that existed with UniFirst. However, because it wasn't brought up to council, it's not a actual contract, right? It's a valid contract. So, now that we've gone out for pricing, if you could see, Cintas charges two hundred and three dollars with nineteen cents a year. We would be paying ten thousand five hundred and fifty-six for uniforms. With Mission linen supply, we would pay three hundred and eighteen dollars with sixty-two, and that would be sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. And UniFirst, we were paying thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year. So, we chose to go ahead and move with Cintas, and that's who is currently providing services. We just want to make sure that we do it formally, and that's why I'm bringing it before you for approval.
Do we have motion?
There is motion.
It says, I'm sorry, a question. It says here, amount twenty-seven thousand on the...
Correct. The, yes, so the, the first amount, when we created this, that's what we were thinking they were going to charge us. But once I got the backup, it, it wasn't that amount.
Okay, all righty then. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 29, discussion and action to approve the use of Wells Fargo Capital Projects Funds in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to repair and expand bridge crossings at Bauman.
Motion to approve. Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you've been around the area of the Bauman Bridge that's closer to the middle drain. It's collapsing, pretty much. It's collapsing. So, I don't know if you remember, a couple of months back, we came because we repaired the Zebu, Worsham, and Anderson, right now, we're still pending the Zebu. And we identified that this bridge crossing needs immediate repair. So, we're asking for approval. Five thousand, almost six thousand dollars the pipe will cost. And then we have to provide all the material to the water irrigation district, and they do all of the labor. So, we're estimating it's about twelve thousand dollars. We still have funding in the capital funds for the older capital that we had. There's still funding available there, and that's what, we're wanting to use that particular account to pay for these bridge expansions.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Are, how, are we just going to expand it to the current width?
No, we're adding...
Or we're expanding it for a future problem?
We're adding sixty feet.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sixty. Sixty feet.
Great, thank you.
I mean, not sixty feet wider. I think it's forty, and we're going sixty, in case we need to expand. I'm like, no, it's not a hundred and twenty.
Forty, ten and ten.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number thirty-one, discussion and action to approve Representative Alaric Rene Rodriguez and any other council member to attend TML Region Four meeting in San Elizario, Texas on June 14, 2019.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
That's going to cost us way too much.
This, this, this meeting is going to be held in San Elizario. They're going to co-host with Clint. And one of the things is that since TML is, stretches from Anthony all the way to Big Springs, which is a pretty significant area. So, since I'm your representative, president of TML District Four, it, we've tried to put our, not just our regional, because when we put them on the east side of our district, some of us don't go. So, this is something that we're trying to get our community and our members, our nearest...
Neighbors?
Neighbors to come to these meetings so that they can, when we start going back and forth, we can have a, a good turnout.
Since I don't travel, I may actually travel to San Elizario. What should I pack?
Aye.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Raftora? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number thirty-two, discussion and action to create guidelines on agenda items and backup material before an item can be placed on the agenda.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Mr. Duran?
The reason I put this on is sometimes at our last meeting, or meeting before, whenever, an item was put on that Jim had to clarify. And I think also, if we put a dollar amount, if we do a little research and put dollar amounts onto what items are going to cost, it will save a lot of problems in the future, as I well know. And I think that if we do a little bit more research before we put an item on the agenda, it'll help the public also know what the item's going to cost. And also, exactly, you know, staff can help us whether an item should be put on there or if it should be. A lot of times, I think that staff can handle a lot of the things that we do put on the agenda. And this way, it'll, it'll just kind of set us some guidelines to help us do a better job of putting items on the agenda.
Mr. Perez?
Well, and this is just my personal thing. It's a little bit of a pet peeve, though. We already have the process in place. We already have this form. And not to pick on you, but it's not even completely filled. And so, I think that if we're going, I mean, I'm, I'm, I have a thing about it. If we have a form and it asks things, we should, you know, fill it out. And so, I think that this is a good instrument already in terms of the information that we can get. Or I, yes, granted that there's other stuff that may be attached, excuse me, attached to it. But I think that if, if we don't do our due diligence in filling this out, then it, it's still, it's still not going to work. So, I think that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we fill it out. And if we're going to intend to, to put something on the agenda, my two cents.
Ms. Elavos? It also, you know, this thing about how much it's going to cost, I'm not, I'm not an expert, you know? You're not an expert. We don't know what it's going to cost. We have no idea. This is what our staff is for. And I think last time, we established with, with our attorney that he's going to review them and closely, and let us know which direction we need to take. And I think that's something we didn't have in the past, and it was open to interpret however you want to interpret it, him, myself, anybody here. I think it's kind of censoring if we do something like this, you know? Let's not do that to ourselves, because one day, you're going to need to bring something up here. Maybe nobody agrees to, to it, and your constituent is asking you to. it, and your constituent is asking you to, you know? I don't wanna be the bear, bearer of bad news. I'd rather take them to the source, and that's what I do. That's what I do, and I wanna, you know, thank Mr. Martinez for stepping up to the plate and saying, you know, he's gonna, from this point forward, he's going to review them, and, and let us know what, which direction best serves our city with these items.
Mr. Duran?
At our last meeting, I think Mr. Rodríguez brought it up as getting more guidance from, and I'm not saying we don't put an item on the agenda. What I'm saying is, let's do, as Mr. Perez said, let's do all that we can. That way the item is understandable for the public, number one, and is not gonna put us at risk, number two. And like you said, Jim's gonna be helping us now, and like you said, we don't know how much things are gonna cost. That's why we rely on staff. And like you said, the, the form is there. I'm just saying, let's start using it, you know?
Mr. Rodriguez?
To touch on something, Mr. Duran, sufficiently, the cost is something I'm always sensitive to when I'm looking at these. When I, and I know it's funny reform, when I first started looking at reviewing agenda items before they got on the agenda, three years ago, maybe before a while, I think one of my routine answers was just, it's fine, please include the proposed cost. Approve, please include, include the proposed cost. And that, I think, I don't do that as much now, 'cause I think everybody got the message, oh, we're supposed to include the proposed cost. Just in terms of fair notice, I mean, that's always just an important thing for the, when you need that, if you want fair notices, this is what I'm proposing. My, my point with all this is to say, even when you don't know the cost, even if you even have an estimate of the cost, if you have a request for how much you're asking, or a not more than them, or a not less than them, or a per unit, or a per day, or any, any kind of way you can put a dollar figure, even though it may change later, even though, you know, you can explain it, hey, I thought it was X. Went to the meeting, got information from staff, turns out it's a lot more expensive than that. Okay, I understand that, but at least you, you want to be seen to have tried to disclose the proposed cost to the public.
Mr. Arte?
And all I wanna add is that sometimes we wanna place items on the agenda, like guardrails, streetlights. At budget time, it's when you tell us, this is the budget that you have. It's when we don't have no more money in the budget, or we can't justify Bakersfield. They're asking for streetlights on Wind Road. We go out there after our meetings to make sure where you're proposing the like, is it needed, and does it meet the requirements of our ordinance? If it doesn't, we see that there's a safety hazard, we immediately, I don't have to bring that to council, because we have a budget that we work out of. It's only when you're asking for stuff that, number one, doesn't meet the guidelines, that you're gonna get a little bit of pushback from staff, saying, well, you have an ordinance telling you, you can't do that.
So then why?
Right? So we're gonna say no. At that point, we can't tell you, you can't place the item on the agenda. All we can say is, there's no money for that, and we can't justify it administratively.
And, and, and this is why we created a list, to put it on a list, because we don't have the budget. And, and constituents are happy about that, versus before, pues no hay dinero, no hay luz. Now they know that in the future, when the budget comes in, there's a list, and that's better communication with our constituents, meeting their needs.
We also have council members that kinda reach out and say, I wanna place an item on the agenda, and they give you some information, but not all information, and it's also not fair for staff that we add more information. It's like, oh, I didn't want you to add that, or you're adding too much to the information. So, I mean, I, I think that the responsibility falls on the...
On us.
Right? But I'm, I'm there to assist you with any information, and I've done agenda items, I think, for all of you. But sometimes it just gets too, too repetitive, and not enough information is given in order for us to bring a summary sheet that kinda creates all of the information that you all need.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And I was called. No, it, one of the, I wanna, I wanna say this. Back before our current mayor, Jesús Ruiz was here, he brought something here to council about this. I just remembered when we, when you, when I saw it, and I, it just dawned on me. Can we check on that, please? Because there's already something there.
Which is the form?
Right? So, okay, so then, and it also...
When the form is there, it tells you what's the problem?
It also said that we need to fill it out, because I believe if it wasn't properly filled, it wasn't gonna be placed on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Now, this was back in thirteen, so it's a long time ago, so I don't really remember the whole, yeah, the whole thing about it. But I know we did do something with that, because there was an issue. I totally understand, Mr. Ralph and, and Ms. Villalobos, but I will say this. Budget time, remember, we need to allocate funds. Our staff already knows what it is their duties, what are our ordinance saying, okay? I will never bring something that I know goes against our ordinance. Me. I don't know about you guys, I'm just saying, I won't do it. I will tell my constituent, because I have, and I always will continue to do, and say, that goes against the ordinance. I will make sure that, you know what? The ordinance doesn't allow it, and I am not gonna bring it. Okay? That is just me. That's, you guys don't have to do it, but I'm just saying that sometimes, sometimes, we have to be that way, because it is redundant to put a light in front of another house, because those are issues that some of our residents want, or they want us to safely guard their homes. We're not here to protect everybody's property. Imagine, we're gonna put a wall on everybody's house? No! There's laws against that preventing us, right, Jim? Well done, well done, to my point. So, so Jim already was told that he, last meeting, or the meetings prior, that he is going to make sure that whatever we put, that we are not gonna jeopardize our standards and go against our ordinances, and that we're not gonna put the city in a position that we're going to be liable. So that should fix some of the problems, and just to address Mr. Duran's thing, I totally agree with this. We need to put as much information, because I hear it all the time. Oh, you guys don't, we heard it, this, on this council, well, we didn't get to, we already addressed that we're gonna put a little bit more information on it, so that they can know and feel comfortable. I get it, we need to do our due diligence.
Mr. Arte?
I just wanted to add, since next year and the following year, it's becoming election year, we also wanna get away from, you know, council members requesting information, and it may seem like, oh, because I wanna vote, we're giving you this. And that's the reason why we have processes in place, in order to make sure that that information doesn't come for council, it's an administrative function. And that protects you all, it protects the city, and it protects the citizen.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. One more time.
From the beginning?
No, what information? I'm sorry, I don't get it.
Okay, so next year and the following year, we're, we're beginning elections, right? So for election time, we see an increase where council members will come in and request more information, or because, okay, well, please vote for me, and I will put a streetlight on, on the, so in order to avoid those type of conflicts, it's better to allow the administration to, to take on that role, and make sure that if there is a need, we assess, and then we will recommend if, and if there's money in the budget, we will make sure it gets done.
So, I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm, that was one question. The other thing is, I wanna really tell you guys, I don't know who you've touched, or how you've touched, you know, your constituents, but I know that I have shown them where to go, how to do it, and you still get those, those that, well, you know, you're not doing anything for me. Well, it's not me, I, I have a body, and it's not just one person. It's not just one person. So, I don't say no to them, I just tell them, look, this is the law, we can bring it to council and see what happens, but don't expect anything. You know, I'm not promising nothing. But they do know where to go for next time. I've seen some that bypass me now and go straight to city. They bypass me and go to the city. They didn't do that before. Sometimes you have to hold them by the hand. I do a lot of that. But that was part, that was part of me trying to change the city, the way, the mentality, the way they think. If we continue on the same mentality, you know, keeping them blind, or not showing them the way, we're not gonna, we're not, we're, we're just as, we're just as guilty as the past council, as, as they say it, okay? So, I do a lot of handholding. Yes, I do. I do a lot of handholding, and yes, I bring it here, because I want us to make a decision as a whole. Not my decision, but as a whole. And sometimes I need to hear it from the attorney, that we can't, that we can't, you know, for whatever reason, for ordinances, whatever. I mean, we have people who say, screw the ordinances, you can do it. But that's not true. You come here and you show them, and they, they know where to come now. And, and we need a lot of that, we really do. We're talking about the census. How are they gonna, you know, they don't know you. You're not out there. I'm not saying that you're not, just for illustrative purposes.
Mr. Perez?
In terms of, of trying to make this process better, I think that if we keep, and I don't know, and, and I don't know if we can, how this can be done formally, or if it can be at all, is that we keep to a suggested submission date, like for, for the backup. Like, if you don't make, if you don't make it with a backup material, if you have other things that you wanna add, if it's not there, then it waits for the next meeting, that kinda thing. And, and then this, the form, not all of us have a computer at, at the time that we need something. I think if we can provide the form, a blank form with lines on it, that way you can, you can...
Write it down.
Handwrite it, and then submit it back to, I mean, at the very least, have somebody type it out for us, if, if that is, if that, if that, you know, it's not gonna happen all the time, but sometimes you're, you're pressed for time, you're thinking, okay, I'll do that, because it, it came up, it's an issue that comes up. And then, and then if you have any questions, you can always call us on our cell. I say, well, what does this mean? Because if we don't have good handwriting, you know, you can also, just, just for clarification. But it, and it makes us fill out things.
Yeah, and it should be used only as an emergency purpose, it's not in every agenda, 'cause I know, we, we know that you guys have your own jobs, too, and still having to assist us.
But if, if we had that, then if somebody's in the office, or South Spike, the office, and may not have a computer, they can just write it down quickly.
Mr. Rodriguez?
This is the last time I'm speaking, trust me. No, no, I just, I just wanna reiterate what I said. Some of, some of the things, some of the things that we put on is, I know we have to grab the hand of our constituency. I get it, I understand, I've done it too. But I am not gonna put the burden on, on to you, because I don't tell them, oh, it's, we have to make a decision on our own, when I know it's not right, okay? When it's not right, because there's an ordinance, I am not gonna bring it, because what does that say? Indirectly, you're making that person think that we are not gonna do it, that you want to, but you don't wanna say, no se puede, no we can't. No, no, hold on, hold on. That's, that's what people here in Socorro get when we say that. The majority of our residents see that. Oh, usted sí, pero ellos no. That's their mentality. And let me tell you, since two thousand and thirteen to now, I understood that right away. How they think because of the way Socorro was. I am never gonna bring something and give hopes, false hopes at that, because my ordinance says otherwise. I am not gonna give hope to them, because I'm gonna put the burden on all of you, because when we say, oh, we're gonna take it to Jim, when we could've said in the very beginning, hey, our administrator, Adriana Alarte, our city manager, has the ability, that you can go and talk to her, and she'll disseminate what you need. If it cannot be done, she's the person that's gonna tell you no, because our ordinance says no. There is no need to bring it to council, to this body, because we're all gonna look back. I don't care looking back, because I tell people no all the time. But I also tell them no, and I also tell them why. I take out this phone that the city provides, and I ditch out the ordinances, because Ms. Navarro knows that I'm not, and I periodically get my, my ordinances books, right? And I go and I go, chik, 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 and I make sure that I have copies. And I'm, once in a while, I'll go through them, and I, somebody brings up something, I'll say, hey, hold on, and then I'll look at it, and I say, you know what? This is why we can't. I am not gonna bring it, because there's no need, when we know, when we know, and we have to say no sometimes, because we cannot hold everybody's hands. There's thirty-two thousand residents here, and you're putting us in a predicament that, you know what, ah, por eso, that's why, that's their mentality. They say, ah, no quiero ir, because, porque nunca hacen nada. It's because we already have laws in place that prevent us from doing that. If we already know, and we don't wanna say no, why do you bring it, so that we all can look back? I'm pretty sure, Ralph, that, and, and, and I'm not gonna pick on you, but I'm just saying, there's things that you've brought that I've said, hey, you know, we've done, you know, in our past, you know, I'm not bringing up, you know, old wounds and stuff, but I'm just saying, don't do that, because we're gonna look back. I've said it to some, not all, but that's what I'm trying to say, is that sometimes we have to say no. And we know that if we fill out this piece of paper, fill it out to the max, so that we will be transparent as possible.
Mr. Duran?
I don't think we need to have any action on this. I think we've pretty much filled out what we need to do. So I don't think we need, we can move on to the next item.
And I, I'd like to answer to Mr. Rodríguez.
Ms. Elavos?
So, I'm never, ever thinking of what you guys are gonna think.
Ms. Elavos, just referring from personal taxes regarding putting items on the agenda.
Yes.
We can all agree that we all have different styles.
Okay, excuse me.
We need to fill out the form.
I was talking, because I am talking about this form, and you allowed him to talk about why I bring this up. I know it's directed to me, it's always been directed to me, and it's okay. I'm here to learn and grow from it, but I will not allow anyone accuse me that I'm trying to make you guys look bad. I'm not thinking of you guys, I really am not. I'm thinking of that constituent, that I sit there for two hours, and you can tell them till you're blue in the face, and they're looking at you like, es igual que los demás. I bring them to show them that it's not me, that we have an attorney, that's why I ask the questions. And when they leave here, do you think they call me back for the same issue? No. As a matter of fact, they thank, a lot of them have thanked me, that they did not realize. And that's what you guys are not getting. You guys are in a different bridge. I'm in a different bridge. I'm here to educate and bring them with me, because they don't come here. And if you guys don't like that, I'm sorry that you guys don't like that. But I'm not here for you, I'm here for them. I promised that I would, I would be different, and I am different. I don't, I really don't think about you guys, how bad you look, or how you think you look, because they don't even say anything about that. They walk out of here satisfied. Now, I will tell you, I don't bring everything here. Do you know how many constituents I talk to daily? I only bring the ones that I am there for two, three hours, and they're like, pero, pero, pero. And I said, this is what I can do for you. So I'm sorry that you guys think differently, but it, it's not the way you guys think. It really is not, at all. I'm not thinking of how bad you, as a matter of fact, you know, a lot, a lot of times it helps tremendously. And if you guys don't like it, I'm sorry, but I'm not here, you know, you guys are on your own merit. I'm my own, my own merit, but I'm on a mission. I'm on a mission to change the city, and the way they think about us. And if you guys wanna be the regular council people that we've got in the past, go right ahead. Go right ahead, but that's not what the city needs. And I'm sorry that I brought more work to you guys, but this is the only way, I'm thinking, one person at a time, hopefully families at a time, will be changing their mind. Maybe not, but it has nothing to do with you guys, zero to do with you guys. I am on a mission, and that's my mission, and I'm sorry that you guys feel differently. Now, the other thing I wanted to say is, monkey see, monkey do. I learned how to fill these out by looking at other ones, and they weren't completed. So, this is the first time I hear that they have to be completed, or there's an ordinance out there that says they have to be completely completed. I have no problem doing that, absolutely zero. Thank you.
Do we have? Do we have a speaker? No. Do we need a motion to delay? No action? Do you have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll resume my motion. Yeah, I'll resume my motion.
Okay, I'll resume my motion. We've already discussed it, we don't need to go any further.
Item number thirty-three, discussion and action to move item to excuse absent council members out of consent agenda into the regular agenda.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Duran?
Reason I brought this is because we've had people who have talked about um, when we don't have quorum. And then, we've, I've, I've been here, where did you call them, but they don't answer. If, you know, if you're not gonna be here at a meeting, please have the courtesy to call and let us know because it costs a lot of money to put a meeting on and then not have quorum. Our attorney charges us whether he does anything or not, it's not fair to staff to give up their time. And I think it's just a matter of courtesy to um, let us know. I mean, uh, this last meeting, Mr. Navardis, he let us know, he was in training. He said at the last meeting, your son was in an accident. Okay, would've, I mean, if we had known that he was in an accident, call us, let us know, hey, you're not coming. Instead of having us wait here till six-thirty and nobody showed up. This way, if you, and it's just common courtesy, call us, let us know so we can close the meeting, everybody go home. And not even have anybody show up. We can call Jim, tell him, Jim, forget it, you know. You know, and, and I, that's why, if, if we can, and it'll put us more accountable. You know, if we have um, so-and-so is not here, did they call? No. Did the, and, you know, did you reach out to them? Yes. They didn't show up, then they're not excused. If so-and-so, if you're sick, I'm not gonna make the meeting, you're excused. But, I mean, in business, I mean, all of us, if you have a no-call, no-show, what do you do with them? You get rid of them. So I think that, you know, we need to um, have the constituents in mind too. Because they, they do show up, all one of them, to our meetings. And I think it's, it's, it's not fair, if we know we're not gonna have a quorum, to close it off. That's, that's the only reason I wanna move it to regular agenda, so we can, you know, find out where the person's at. That's it.
Ms. Ellos?
And, and just to uh, add to what he, or answer to what he said, um, I always call in, always. This one time, I could not call in because the lady that hit my son was uh, inebriated. It, it was, and another lady was inebriated anyways. The police officer would not allow me to go to my car to get the, my phone. He would not allow me, even though I told him I had an emergency, I needed to go to my, and he says, stay where you're at. They were having an issue with the two young ladies that were there. This is the only reason I did not call. That's the only reason I could not call, I could not get to my phone. I was not planning not to come, I was on my way here when I was called about the accident.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And I can vouch for that because I saw that, she, the, the lady ran into, because she was in front of us. And if I would've known that that was her son, I would've stopped. But I was going to drop my equipment so I can come to council. That's why I did not render help. But I saw her, she was flipping and yelling and rolling down the window. I know, if, like I said, if I would've known, I would've stopped as well, but, but I know that when we left, she did, like, an hour after, she did call, she goes, oh Renee, and we had that conversation. I understand that there are some, sometimes we can't or aren't able to. I get it, because it's of circumstances, you know. I just, I just wanna say that I, I, I understand time because Jim doesn't charge us a dollar, I wish he would sometimes. Or just say, oh, well, today no quorum, well, okay, no problem. But- But, but it's not gonna happen, and I get it, you know, our time, our constituents, one, two, you know, but, you know, our staff. And, and, and it's, it's, and I get it, but we also have to think about the human aspect of the emotion of an accident or, or a loved one, or, or, I know Mr. Navardis is not here because he, his work sends him out. He's gotta go do, I know the right world because I work as, as a, as a vendor. And I understand because some of other supervisors and managers and stuff like that leave. So I, I do get it that there's times where we're not gonna be able to. I, I guess that if we can, we'll just call, that's it. You know, I, I, I get it, you know, we understand the human aspect of it.
Mr. Bettis?
I think that, well, I can only speak for myself, but I think that we have been pretty good about showing up. I think that it was just that in these past couple of meetings, it just happened that everybody had something to do or because I can tell you that for the most part, I call in whenever I can't, I, I can't show up. And so whether it's, uh, and, and I'll be honest with you, if it's, of course, I'm always honest, but the thing is that in terms of um, my work, sometimes I have, like right now, I, yesterday, I spent till eight o'clock at night at, in my office, doing work. So it, you know, it just, we have peaks and valleys. And unfortunately, that's, that's the thing, that with me, I would suggest and that we just hold to that, that self-accountability. That I'm not going to ask, well, why were you absent, if you were absent, it was because you had a legitimate concern. Or a reason, and I'm not going to probe, you know, why you were absent, you had a good reason, otherwise you wouldn't. I, I think it's that sense of responsibility and accountability, that I'm gonna show up, if it, if I can, it's for a reason. You know, and whenever possible, yes, we, we will call, but it just so happens that sometimes you can't. And, and, and I think that um, if we hold to ourself, ourselves to that standard, I think that we'll be doing okay. We've done okay. I, I, I don't think that it's been, I mean, again, I think that in these past two months maybe, we've just had things happen at the same time with all of us, and that's, and that's the reason for the absenteeism.
And, and just for the record, I did get here, I just, nobody was here. I got here about ten minutes before seven, which is when we were, we were released, twenty minutes before.
The meeting before last, that I got here, I mean, they had just, and I was- and I was like, you know, not breaking, not bending any speed laws, but just being, being, you know, trying to, to, to uh, drive as, as as efficiently as possible, yes.
Mr. Ad?
Well, the only, the reason I brought this is because when, at one meeting, I, I asked staff, whether, did you call? And then when we called a meeting, some lady came up and got in Mr. Rolarte's face about, you know, wasting the time and this and that and the other. And I just thought, well, okay, let's be transparent. Uh, if, if there's a problem, okay. Um, Mr. Navardis is not here, and then, you know, the staff can say, he's in training. You know, it just lets people know that he just didn't show up.
But I think that, I'm sorry-
Mr. Bettis?
Ralph, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off. But I think that no matter what, you can give, you can say, you know, he's a trainer, or, or whatever the case, whatever the legitimate um, explanation is, it won't be enough.
Of course it won't be enough, but it will be something, it's just not um, you know, we, we, what we do is we um, it's in consent agenda.
Oh, I understand.
And then, okay, we just blanket it. This way, they know that if two people are absent, why? Not just, you know, we just, we just go. I mean, to me, and it's, it's not a big deal, but it, it is to them. It gets, it lets them know where we're at, not just, we just decide, because I mean, they're all, that woman got in her face and went, well, they just don't show up. This gives them a reason why you're not here.
I think that, the thing is that we're bordering on also, and I'll be very honest, or very candid, that we, I, if I have a personally, personal thing that I need to attend to, whether it's family, with, I, that's all I'm gonna say, it's, it's personal, and that's it.
That's all you have to say. But I mean, when we have to tell them, we can't get ahold of them, or uh, they don't answer, uh, then that, that kind of like tells them, you don't care. This way, you have a personal problem, because I'm not gonna be at, at one of the meetings, I'm gonna be in Boston for my daughter's graduation. That way, they'll know why I'm not in this chair. Not just uh, motion to approve, consent.
But what I'm saying is, I'll tell staff, you know, it's, it's a personal matter, and that's, that's all it-
That's all they need.
Yeah, we, I don't need to hear your, I mean, none of you guys, I don't wanna say it's bad, right?
I don't wanna hear yours.
No, 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 you have a personal problem, I mean, a personal issue, you have a personal issue. You know, I don't really need to hear the details.
Yeah, exactly. Positive or negative?
I got you, I guess.
Ms. Ellos?
Yes.
And um, I'm not, I'm not sure if you were here, Mr. Bettis, but Mrs. Cruz brought it up uh, very negatively. And then the audience was here hearing it, and um, I did call her today. Um, and I, I was hoping to speak to her, but I didn't get a chance to speak to her, but I did tell her that it was not fair, that she pointed the finger because not all of us were not here uh, the first time, and the second time, uh, not all of us were not here, but we looked like none of us came, and it just doesn't sit right. So um, we appreciate that um, you know, you're on top of it, but unfortunately, sometimes we have things that we can't just, it's out of our control. Out of our control. We have a set date to be here, uh, I think we all mean to be here, but um, uh, sometimes there's things that they're out of your control and that look really bad, and I had to set the record straight today because, believe it or not, there's people that do watch. And I got an earful from it, and uh, and they called me and told me about it. There's people that watch, they watch all the time.
Your in-house speaker, Mary Anthony?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Um, I'll say two things, uh, one, thank you, Mr. Duran, for bringing this item, I think it's important and I think it should pass. Um, two, I agree, I don't, I don't need to know why you didn't come. Like, I don't need to know the specific reason why, why someone couldn't make it. Um, I personally don't need to know that, I don't think anyone else needs to know that. Uh, I do think it matters, as I have served on the Civil Service Commission, uh, one of our first questions when people would be absent was, well, did they call? Did they let someone know? And obviously, there's times where you're not gonna be able to call. Uh, and that can be clarified at a later time, and I apologize if you were offended by me saying that no one was here, but I know that mayor was here, Mr. Duran was here, because you can see the videos that they were here, uh, I was here to see that they were here. Uh, I, I overheard that someone was in training, I wasn't sure whose name was mentioned um, at, at those meetings. And, and I did see Mr. Bettis uh, at, one, one of the times, as he, as I was walking out, the meeting had ended, he was trying to rush in. Six-thirty-two, we stopped at six-thirty.
I'm in between the parking lot and here.
Um, yeah, and so, and, and so I get it, things happen, I, I, I get it. Uh, and that obviously entitles you to an excused absent as well, I think, that's what we did in the Civil Service Commission. If it was an emergency and that's the reason you didn't call, it was excused. I just wanna say um- I forgot what I was gonna say.
Thank you.
I know it was really important.
What are we doing?
Just import it out of, out of consent into regular.
Do you guys wanna do that, or do you just, I-
That's what we're voting.
Vote on it and see where it goes.
Nay.
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, no.
No.
Item number thirty-four, discussion-
We can make a motion, right, just to leave it, or just, is it?
It did.
Oh, okay.
Three to two.
Just call.
That's all it takes, is just a call. We can all get better at it, I'll be the person.
Item number thirty-four, discussion and action to schedule workshops to prepare for the twenty-twenty election charter amendment.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I think that Mr. Duran, oh, sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Duran?
Well, we, we have a, or we started, tried to start a um, charter commission, or charter uh, committee to make recommendations on changing the charter. The charter does need to be updated, it is uh, very, very flawed as it is right now. And I don't think we're gonna get that off the, off the, you know, off and running. So I think we just need to take the bull by the horn, schedule some workshops, make the changes that we need to change before the twenty-twenty election, because we won't be able to do it after that. Well, we will be able, we have to wait to do it. We can, so I think we can um, uh, have staff maybe put together uh, how we can do that, how is the best way? I think Jim could probably help out there on how to change the um, the um, the charter the way it is, and what changes we're gonna need to bring it up to uh-
To the twenty-first century?
Yeah, bring it up to updated, thank you.
Ma'am? Yeah, legally, I mean, the, the most critical point, critical element is deadline, I mean, there, there's two uniform election dates a year. Next one is in November, that's, if you're, if you're shooting for that election, then you need to get mentioned twenty-twenty. I assume you're shooting for twenty-fourth November, twenty-nineteen. If you're shooting for that election, the deadline is the nineteenth. And it's the deadline for the final passage of the ordinance calling for a charter amendment election. So, and you need to send August nineteenth, and we're back from that, my, I, I defer to the city manager, whether or not that's feasible, it seems to be really tight.
So, we're probably looking at twenty-twenty then.
Yeah, having been on a charter commission, um, I think that we need to give it the, the attention it deserves.
Yeah, because we're not gonna, we're, I know, I, I didn't plan on twenty-nineteen because I know-
No, it's twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, yeah.
We need to go section by section and-
Do it right, but I mean, if we don't start it, we're gonna be in the same boat trying to get it in twenty-nineteen, it ain't gonna happen.
Jim, can we cut it into phases and do it like?
You, you can, um, yes, you can, I mean, I, I legally, if we could go through it and I can prioritize in conjunction with your administration. But here, the mission critical ones were, these are really dangerous. Here, you know, dramatic errors, insomniac errors that we probably need to fix. But you have probably a number of options like that. Legally, I can tell you, there are certain, I think every one of your procedures, there are definitely some problems in the charter. Some things are just like non-secutors, I mean, they don't make any, they're not just dramatic errors, they literally don't make sense, and you can't tell what was intended. And you kinda have to make it up. Um, there's some things that legally quite kinda create blank spots, and you're like creating a hole, and if, you need to fill it in. Um, administrative leaders, city manager probably has it in place.
Well, I know, uh, I've received concerns from different council members of things that if you wanna change, all we can do is just change like the plurality where we have to go for a runoff election. That needs to be updated because we went from two-year terms to four-year terms, that needs to be updated. So there's a couple of things that we can actually see that need to be updated. But then, let's provide, let's, let's create a calendar where we can meet for workshops and then provide each amendment, right? Amendment number one, what is it that you wanna change in the verbiage, what do you wanna add to a section?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, one of the things that, that I agree with Mr. Duran is that we've been trying to do the, a charter amendment, right, since like two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and fifteen? And I had placed people that, that don't show up, and, and then some of us can't find any individuals to, to show up. And then the people that, that, that want to be in this charter commission have shady past with, with, not only some shady past, no, this is true, because it's gotta be out there. There is some shady past and they have some-
You don't know their intentions.
They have-
And they have other intentions.
You don't know their intentions.
Right, so those are, uh, those are things that, uh, that I, I don't, I don't agree. And we need to change because a, a judge said, when I got elected, um, it, it, it went from two years to four, four-year term. And the judge said it, it was done. And when it, it caused a big ripple effect because in our charter, it still says two-year terms. So those are things that we can't just go and Jim, I had, that's what I explained to Jim, that I wanted to change it because he was right. He says, you can't just go in there, Renee, and force me to just change it, you gotta take it to the public and say, this is the change. You know, and that's what we need to address, those issues is that we as council understand, but the public doesn't understand that we can't just order Jim to change our charter because it's wrong. We have to have a commission that we cannot fill. So I think it's up to us, I think that, that it's, it's a great thing to start now, get prepared for twenty-twenty. So I think it's up to us, I think that, that it's, it's a great thing to start now, get prepared for twenty-twenty, and, and then as we go, then we'll see, hey, these are the changes that, that staff needs to recommend to us that need to be fixed. And then whatever we decide to say, hey, we need to add this, or we need to add that, then that's, that's the proper way to do it.
Jim, if I may, um, are there, it's been a while, are there things that we can do as a council in terms of updating the, the charter that's not too substantial? Or does it have to go, I mean, I'm just asking, does it have to go out for vote, uh, for ratification?
Yeah, the latter, I mean, it's essentially the municipal constitution.
Right, right.
If you're gonna change it, it needs to be done via election.
See, because I'm thinking that even, even in terms, and this may, may draw it out a little bit more, I think that it's, it may be better served that we have elections on sections of the, of the charter, versus making sweeping changes and then say, here, vote on it. Because then you're gonna get people that don't understand it maybe, or, not that they don't understand, that they won't read it completely. And I think I'd, I'd rather have it done in a piecemeal way, so that people's because they, they, I think it adds to the transparency. If you're, it, because we're, if we do everything at once, I'm gonna say, oh, they wanna just like this under, under the, uh, the, under the radar for us, and, and we don't know what's in there. I think that in terms of, of the, the transparency and information process, I think that it would be better served that we do it in, that we look at it in a piecemeal fashion, but also put it to election or vote in, in a piecemeal fashion.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I, I totally agree, but we also have to look at the pros and the cons when it comes to that. Because we are willing to change it, what if, you know, some of us are not up for reelection, some of us are, are term limit, some of us, uh, might not even win our election. So those are things that, what if somebody else comes in and doesn't want to change, uh, the things that need to be changed and to be addressed? Those are things that we have to look at as well, because I understand, I, I think that it's itemized, we can itemize, hey, you know, this one could be, this is what we intend to do, right, Jim? Instead of just saying, this is what we wanna change as a, as a whole?
Yeah, of course it is, and the other thing to consider in connection to that issue, it's obviously a policy decision, council, the cost, I mean, every separate election has costs.
Yeah.
I mean, and it, and it, and it's, it's gonna fluctuate, and it'll go up with, with, with
Oh, obviously, yeah.
Right, so I mean, those are, are, are things that we have to, I mean, we can tackle it when we make the days. I think that we, we should meet and start already, and, and, and I think those are things that we just do.
So, so where, where do we go?
Mr. Raff? Yeah, sorry? You forgot?
No, I didn't, I handled it. Did I miss it? No, I'm saying the, the workshops, so, the law doesn't require you to have a committee, right? So if you're gonna have the workshops, I would post the workshops, just like a regular meeting, so the public is invited to discuss these, uh, changes that you all want to
Like, like a bud, like budget hearing, like the budget?
Do you want staff to come back and give you dates of when, you know, provide you dates of eligibility? And do you rather have them during the week, or on Saturdays?
On Saturdays?
If we do it on Saturday, I'll buy the middle.
I'll eat it.
Huh?
I'll eat it.
Can you write in the motion?
No, no, okay. No, 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 no.
No, no, alright.
Space them up.
Space them up to give people to think.
Okay, two a month, or one a month?
Yes.
Can we do, Jim, can we do like an hour before the meeting as a workshop? Or half an hour?
I think yes, but we, we've done budget, we've done budget workshops an hour before, and no one showed up. So it's like kinda of a shady situation. Well, sometimes they don't show, show up, and, so we have a cabinet and the budget workshop. I can come with a proposed calendar, and then you all can make changes, right?
Yeah.
And, right, you during the weekend, on Saturdays holidays, not us.
I, Saturdays, to me, if it's possible, that'd be great.
Saturdays from your heart.
Seven AM is fine.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, no, 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 I mean
And they're usually what, two hours? Three hours?
Yeah, we can, I mean, you, you have a whole year and a half to prepare, so I think if, if we're, like, it doesn't get so far on Thursdays. But let's, okay, so let's provide a calendar, then we meet once, and then we'll know from there how often we have to meet, depending on the first discussion.
That's true.
We'll know, oh, there's a lot of work, or no, we, we pretty much know what it is that we wanna change. And then we can change the dates and say, okay, now we only need quarter week, or we can meet once a month, or once every two months. Because you do have ample time to, um, work on these. But the first workshop, I think, will tell us exactly where we're at, and it's because
That, that'll give Jim a chance to kinda formulate what, what needs to be changed. And then at the first, at the first workshop, and if, if we see it, it's only a few things, then we, well, okay, I'm being optimistic. If there's not that much that needs to be changed, well, then, you know, we, we can schedule, if it's like the whole thing needs to be revamped. And we can discuss how we're going to do it, whether in pieces or the whole thing. Um, we can discuss all that when the time comes, so I think the, the motion kinda stands as it is. Staff is gonna schedule a workshop, and then, you know, we can go from there.
Mr. Perez?
Last, I, I would, and to Jim's point, I think that we need to focus on anything that actually contravenes the ordinances. I mean, that needs to be, that, that, I think that needs to be the first order of business, so we can make sure that we're, that we, we're following the orders.
And, and any recommendations that we want, just bring them, like, start thinking, okay, I would like, something that's not there, we can address. And therefore, we already have a head start, and we, yeah, so start now. Not have this continuous Yeah, so then, because we're gonna start, we're gonna start with this, and we're gonna start arguing like, wow, this and that. No, just start writing down what you think you wanna change, staff already knows what they're going to change in the charter itself. So we don't have to be stressing about that, but if you want something to be changed, start writing what you want to change in the charter. As, or add, I should say, add to the charter. And that way, it'll be faster and easier, and we can just go through it real quick.
We're actually also delete some of those.
And, and delete some stuff too, so just think about that, and start writing it down, so that when we come to, to these meetings, with the first meeting, we, we should be to the point. Okay?
Here, we have a speaker, Mary Anthony Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Um, the fact that, uh, Mr. Rodriguez says that this is something that you've been talking about since twenty sixteen, we are in twenty nineteen, um, I'll be very blunt, um, you know, we have a year and a half, that seems like a lot of time, I don't think it is. Um, I would just ask if there can be some sort of, um, direction, so that the city manager or the staff brings back the schedule, either at the next meeting, or within the next two meetings. That way, it's not something we forget about six months from now, a year from now. Thanks.
For the next meeting in two weeks? Was she saying that they can say, oh, this is the schedule, what do you think? Huh?
Let Jim prioritize and vote on that. Let Jim prioritize and vote on that.
They'll give us an idea.
Oh, no, 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 it's just to say, when we're gonna have a meeting. Jim can start already working out and has a plan.
It's already a motion, yes.
Do you want to make this?
If you, you wanna change the motion?
To what?
And just say, hey, bring us in the next meeting, a date.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm like next meeting.
A date, a date.
Which is what, I think what the motion says, it's to
No, 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 bring us a date, it's not, you're not gonna present us anything.
Yeah, that's to schedule workshops.
Yeah, next week, you're gonna present us a workshop, a date, where we can agree.
They're going to identify potential dates.
Potential dates, yes, did you?
Did you get that? Okay.
Yeah, they'll go back to the ticket.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Can you hear my gun popping in the video? Can, tell me the truth, I'll stop. Yes.
Do we have anything for thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven?
Okay, uh, move to delete.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Renee? We're not done.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Nine twenty-eight, meeting adjourned.